Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the November 19th, 2024 Summersworth School Board meeting. Thank you all for being here. Can I have a roll call, please?
Maggie Larson.
Here.
Carrie Clark.
Here.
Sarah O'Brien-Hart.
Here.
Crystal D. St. Croix.
Here.
Marsha Brown.
Here.
Barbara Wentworth.
Here.
Bridgette Jameson.
Here.
Gemma Sodadi.
Thank you. Can I invite the Summersworth School Board reps just to come forward to join us and lead us in the pledge? Please, thank you. Whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, into the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I think we have a special recognition to start our meeting with.
I wanted to invite up the state Division One champion, Division Two, sorry, we're going that direction pretty quickly, Division Two State Championship volleyball team representatives that are with us today. We appreciate them making time. And Mr. Steve Hudson, their coach, to come on up. I'll just start out by saying what I mentioned in the hallway. I think the girls know this, I think the coach knows this, but you're not out there for yourselves, you're not out there for the team, you're not out there for the high school. This is really special because it's for the whole community and everybody else as well, but it means a lot to Summersworth, and that includes a lot of individuals that are even no longer in this community but from this community, and they see that we've won and they follow you, and that impact is huge and very much appreciated, beyond just the athletics, but just the town spirit is huge, the city spirit. Thank you.
Thank you. We also have about 11 other members who couldn't be here tonight because of club volleyball or work commitments or other things, but we're greatly appreciative of the recognition. These girls worked super hard over the last few years, especially, you know, in that championship game when we got down one, but I always like to throw this out there, you know, in this amazing feat that these kids over the last three years have 61 wins and only two losses. And that's a testament to just how they are as a group of individuals out there. They're family out there, they play together as a team, it's beautiful to watch and it's absolutely fun to coach, so, thank you. Did you want to hear from them, or?
Listen, I'll start it off unless anyone wants to. As you all know, it was a privilege, not just in this chair, but I can say as like a representative of this community, it was a privilege to watch you play. You were incredible athletes, you were incredible, like, just exemplars of what it means to be an athlete, a student, and a representative of Summersworth. You should be immensely proud, I hope you are. I want to thank you for that experience and thank your families and all the other support in Summersworth that kind of came around volleyball and supported you in that. Hopefully you felt that and you'll continue to feel that, but it was absolutely, I'm a fan, as you know, I'm a fan and I am just so proud of you, and this community is so proud of you. You knocked it out of the park, and I think that I heard one of your members, your captain, Cyia McKay, say that you had mental toughness, you had kind of something that wrapped around being resilient and coming back, and I think that's absolutely fantastic and needed and something that we all can kind of look to and look up to, and congratulations. I think you did phenomenal throughout the season, and I think that you are star, like, members of this community and athletes, so, yay. Anyone else? Anyone else? Congratulations. Yes?
I just want to say congratulations. I had many of you as former students, I will just say, and you were exemplars in fifth grade and you clearly continue to be, so huge congratulations to awesome kids, yeah.
I mean, I think you all know that I am a big fan of yours as well. I've watched you all play most of your games, very, very proud of you, great job.
Did you want to say, did anyone want to? No, no pressure. Come back anytime.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Agenda item number one, any comments by visitors this evening? Any comments by visitors? Come up to the podium, state your name and your address, we'd be happy to hear you. We have 30 minutes for this time. Do not, oh, come on up, come on up.
Hi, I'm Abby Lambert, 208 West High Street, and I have an announcement for everyone about this upcoming blood drive. Before you enjoy the festivities of the holiday parade and the craft fair, feel free to stop by and donate blood for the National Honor Society and American Red Cross Blood Drive. The best gift to give this holiday season is the gift of life. On Saturday, December 7th, National Honor Society will be hosting our first blood drive open to the public at the cafeteria in Idlehurst Elementary School. Donors will get the American Red Cross promotion and be entered in a raffle to win a Stanley Water Bottle and a Roma Joe's gift card. If you want to sign up, go to the americanredcross.org and search in all caps Summersworth HS, no spaces, or use the QR code on our flyers. If you need any more information, feel free to reach out to me directly.
Okay, thank you. Wonderful. All right. Agenda item number two, any comments by board members at this time? Yes, Board Member Wentworth.
Well done, volleyball girls, amazing. Some of you might be my neighbor. Anywho, so I wanted to take this moment to say that school board overall has been super hard work, rewarding at times, amazing, sometimes kind of awful, if I'm being very honest, but overall a wonderful way to be involved in our community and our schools. The school board that exists before you now, I feel very confident that I'm leaving everyone in capable hands of this amazing board, and my last meeting will be December 10th, which is our next meeting, and I'm so grateful to the Ward Two voters, and I'd like to request that I can keep my nameplate, so, thanks.
It's yours. Okay, thank you. All right. Agenda item number three, our consent calendar. What's the wish of the board to adopt the consent calendar?
I make a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
Wonderful, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, do we have any discussion on any items of the consent calendar, enrollment report, or minutes? No, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, okay, the consent calendar is adopted. Moving to our reports, agenda 4.1, our student representative report. Welcome, Talia. It is an honor to have you here. No pressure with the room full, usually I think Thomas had nobody here, so, whenever you're ready, take it away. Do you have your? Yeah.
Thank you. So I have a report from Summersworth High School. National Honor Society just completed a Krispy Kreme donut sale and is now collecting donations for Thanksgiving baskets. They are also setting up donation boxes through the school and community donations can be brought right to the main office. Student Council is currently working on their annual clothing drive, this is a big event, and we have already collected over 50 bags. These will be distributed on December 13th in the Summersworth High School cafeteria, all are welcome to come. Winter sports are right around the corner and we are excited to start our basketball, track, and hockey sports seasons. We want to thank our local Dunkin' Donuts for helping us to recognize and reward our students by coming to our school to offer free lemonade, lawn games, and fun dunking costumes. Summersworth High School will hold its fall parent-teacher conferences on Tuesday, October 26th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. This is a great opportunity for families to tour the school and meet the teachers. Sign-up sheets have been emailed to parents and guardians. Summersworth High School has just started our second quarter, and we have a great, we had a great first quarter and recognized over 100 students for our quarter one Topper Privilege Pass. These students excelled academically and will receive special recognition and permissions. Finally, the Summersworth High School Drama Department held auditions on Friday for their rendition of Mean Girls. Over 30 students came to try out and they are looking forward to putting together another amazing production. A few updates from Idlehurst Elementary School. Idlehurst students are still looking forward, working hard at being kinder than they need to be. They will earn a holiday dance and celebration next month. Idlehurst students honored 79 veterans and currently serving friends and family members at their Veterans Day celebration last Friday, it was beyond special. As we complete our first trimester, we will be holding teacher conferences December 5th and 10th, please sign up with your teachers. From Maplewood, Maplewood School has been talking about gratitude this month. They believe that gratitude is always best when expressed as an action. Each morning we have been announcing an act of kindness. We have a lot of opportunities for students and families to give back. Currently, we are collecting food for the local food bank, collecting clothes for the high school clothing drive, collecting pet food and new pet supplies for the Pope Memorial Humane Society, and the fourth grade will be making blankets for Project Linus. Grades close for students on November 26th, and we are preparing for student-led parent-teacher conferences on December 5th and 9th. We are very excited to march into Summersworth/Berwick Holiday Parade this year. We currently have 37 children signed up to march as a school and celebrate our theme, "There is no place like Maplewood." Summersworth Middle School also has a few updates. Summersworth Middle School rolled out its newest staff member, Ellie Specter, the Therapy Dog. She'll be working two days a week and she's already brought many smiles to many faces. Over 400 students showed up to the first SMS fun night of the year. Students could rotate between basketball, Gaga Ball, volleyball, karaoke, video games, crafts, watch a movie, and snack on snow cones and popcorn. The fundraiser earned $942. October outstanding staff and students were recognized at a community day, congratulations too. Sixth grade Alicia Brown, seventh grade Mason Mulway, eighth grade Tavis Shepherd, and staff member Mrs. Turgeon and Mrs. Turkott, and that's all.
Wonderful, thank you, good job. That's a lot, that's a lot of good stuff. All right, agenda item 4.2, our superintendent's report.
I think I have five relatively brief things. Enrollment report that was in the consent calendar at October, when the October enrollment report came out, the school board asked why numbers were down. Your relatively new superintendent said, "I don't know," but with some help I looked into it, and just so folks are aware, the drop from the start of the school year until now, we had about 35 students move out of the district. I think a lot of those moved out over the summer, and our records were slow in tracking those at the beginning of the school year. About half of those moved to other districts in the state, about half outside of the state, and we've also got more than a dozen students that have registered to homeschool in that period as well. Only one out of district placement and only a handful of high-set students that leave our enrollment numbers, so just wanted to make sure folks had that, and we can include in the enrollment reports in the future just that breakdown. I think it's good to be looking at all school-aged children within the district and tracking over time where they are. Number two, I wanted to make sure everybody on the school board was aware that the Rollinsford School Board voted on Thursday night to provide for their own central office services beginning next school year. They're in the fifth of a five-year agreement with us where we provide contractual services from our central office to Rollinsford. I think it's probably fair to say that for most people on the Rollinsford side involved, once the decision was made 10 years ago to send their middle school and high school students to Marshwood Middle School and Marshwood High School, it was kind of the beginnings of a move in this direction. To be clear, this is a Rollinsford decision, not a Summersworth decision, and the next step in this process at their December school board meeting will be to make a formal vote and to notify us that they're withdrawing from our contractual agreement, and they are obligated to do that before January 1st. Just wanted folks to be aware of that, and I think there's a consensus over there that if they can financially and logistically make this happen, to have dedicated staff primarily, not secondarily focused on their district, makes good sense. As your Summersworth superintendent, I know we will regret the loss of revenue that has come through contractual services, which is about 16% of our central office's budget, not 16% of our overall budget, and it's a little less than a percentage point of our total budget, but it also means that the Summersworth Central Office staff will be singularly focused on Summersworth, which I believe will be a healthy thing, although I don't take for granted the loss in revenue. Number three, just a calendar reminder, school on Monday and Tuesday next week, and then Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday are holidays for students, and then we return, we have three full weeks of school until the winter break. Number four, just a reminder again in terms of school cancellations, since we'll be sliding into the winter, whether that's due to ice, or power outages, or snow, or whatever we may find coming our way, our goal will be to get word out by 5:45 a.m. Everybody and anybody that has signed up for text message alerts, email alerts, and voice message alerts will get it that way, and we'll also do our best to post it on the website and get the word out, email to all staff as well. And fifth and finally, I'll just say, you know, being a couple months into the school, a few months into the school year now, I just continue to be so impressed with the caliber of work happening at all of our schools, of school board as well, but just the range of students we're working with, from those that are struggling significantly to those that are achieving great things, and that our staff and our teachers and our parent educators, our administrators, our secretarial staff are doing such a phenomenal job across the board, supporting all of our kids in so many different ways is absolutely critical, and the partnerships outside of the school, whether that's the Summersworth Police Department or the Fire Department and emergency personnel, and with the city council have all been strong, and it's just kind of a real honor to be here, and things are going pretty well. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right, we have a business administrator's report. Katie, thank you.
Yep, my report's fairly short tonight, too. Since the last update, I did update the budget to reflect the approval of a supplemental appropriation, so that's reflected. There haven't really been any major changes. I did encumber the salaries and benefits for our open positions, so we still have about eight and a half parapositions throughout the district that are unfilled, so I've encumbered those based on days remaining in the rest of the year, and I'll adjust each budget update so that I release the days that we haven't hired somebody. In terms of revenue, since the last update, we received payments for preschool and direct cost of Medicaid, and we also received our first half payment for our building aid. And then I just put a note here on the next year's budget, we've already begun preparations. John and I met with all building admin the last couple of weeks, and we've had some really good conversations, not only next year, but planning ahead three to five years, which has been really great to have those conversations. We'll be receiving estimates in the next few weeks that we'll update the board on for next year's budget. Also, I was going to present later on in the board for the SAU portion of the budget, as John mentioned, with Rollinsford making that vote, I will not be presenting, but the budget is in there just as a placeholder for the requirement that we're required to give Rollinsford their number in November, so if anybody has questions on it, I can answer it, but.
Just for clarity's sake, just to make sure, I intended to mention that ahead of Katie's business administration report. We plan on our central office, we call it the SAU 56 budget, but it's the budget for the central office personnel, which is a little, somewhere between a million and $2 million, in that range. We do that ahead of the rest of our budget simply as a courtesy and an agreement with Rollinsford because their budget process happens sooner and they need to plan on what they'll be paying us for services, so we've got that already in place, they have a number, and until such time that we hear from them, which will probably be sometime after the December board meeting, we have that obligation met, but there's no need to present on it in detail this evening.
It will be a part of your Summersworth total budget when we start those preparations.
It is a part of our budget total.
It gets incorporated, yes, but it is a requirement.
It's just a requirement per contract to get it to them, and I think the clarity is, was also on our, like, budget, you know, to be in December, so will it not be on our December, you know, that's a, will it be on our December meeting agenda, you know, how do we, what's the board's responsibility at this point?
The Rollinsford School Board meeting is two days after our December board meeting, so we'll be hearing, we'll be meeting on that Tuesday, they'll be meeting on that Thursday. I anticipate that we'll probably hear from them shortly thereafter.
I'm as curious if maybe we should move our meeting, just to wait and see what they have to say before we have our meeting in December, if we don't, if there's things that we need to meet on after.
Yeah, it's, um...
It sounds like maybe we may want to move it.
Yeah, I don't know what our obligation is here, you know, because it is a part, there's no separation between the central office and our full budget. Our Summersworth district is a Summersworth district budget, it's one point, you know, one pot of money for that, and we have to manage that. What this is doing contractually, we have to give them in order to, for 2025, '26, to meet, you know, to have a budget prepared for them to pay 16% of.
Whatever the percentage is.
Whatever that, yes.
It's a little bit different this year, isn't it?
It's calculated by formula, but it's about that.
Okay, well, a percent, yeah.
It's 14.88% is what it calculates out this year.
Yeah.
For next year.
At least, Katie feels differently, I don't think we need to move our school board meeting, I think we're, basically the ball's in their court and we anticipate hearing from them, and we have the numbers in place at this point, at least so they can rough budget, and we've met that obligation in either case.
So we won't be voting on this or approving it? Yes, Board Member Jameson?
I was just going to say, it sounds like my understanding is that we don't have any decision-making power over that before the first of the next year, so it wouldn't be relevant anyway.
Correct.
You're required to give them an estimate in November, which has been done, and then you're required to give them a final number in December, so if something went off the rails at their meeting, then you could set another meeting to approve it if you needed to, but I don't think you're going to need to.
Yeah, I don't feel comfortable kind of having this board deliberate or decide or vote on something that's not, you know, not intentionally, or not something that will probably happen, so.
All right, all right. That's it for business? Yep, for anything else, okay? As numbers come in, if there's anything significant for what we'll receive or something, if you can just let us know, because we're seeing it in the news of what we may not be able to be received, so we're all kind of waiting to see where that shakes out, so as soon as you get the information, please share. All right, our city council update, Councilor Parity Kettenzero.
Hello. I do have an update from our last city council meeting relevant to the school board. This is based on my notes, which I think I took pretty good notes, but just an asterisk to check the official minutes, which are not out yet from the council meeting, but I did just want to let you all know that the mayor did announce a new commission on the high school fields and grounds, so it has been, you know, sort of something that we've been talking about for a while, especially folks around the school, that our fields and grounds could use just a particular committee to look at some improvements. Things were flagged, like, you know, no lights on the soccer field so people can't play after dark, there's no track for our track team to practice on, so some of the charges of this commission would be to looking at some updates to improve the facility, determining the community needs, doing a cost assessment, and identifying partners for financing, so of course trying to keep in mind the budget as it goes. And the mayor has named himself or his designee from the city council, Councilor Witham, a rep from the school board, which I believe is at the discretion of the chair, the rep from the Summersworth Festival Association, and a rep from the Booster Club, a rep from the football team, the track coach, and the superintendent or their designee, and I think I already said the football coach, and the Summersworth Facilities Director, so those people will all meet and sort of come up with recommendations, financing, et cetera, and hopefully move us in the direction for some much-needed updates. And I think that was really the only update that I had from our council meeting.
So to piggyback off that, thank you, because I wasn't able to watch the meeting, and we've, the mayor and I have discussed this, this has been a long time in the talks of, in Summersworth, and most football meetings are, you know, I hear about it, so it's actually happening now. It'll be a city joint venture with the school, and maybe some of you will still be here when we have our track and updated concessions and bathrooms and wonderful bleachers and lights on the field, and you'll say, "I was there when." At this point, I'd like to appoint Board Member Brown as the designee for this, yes, with her extensive background in this, in track, in field, and knowing this, and I appreciate your time for that, and the superintendent and all the other staff that's over in your wheelhouse, but I think it's an exciting time, thanks for that, that's a nice one, and I know that there's some trust from families that may be put towards this, to be able to honor students and previous Hilltop kids, so that's great. Good stuff. All right, committee reports.
Our standing committees, Budget and Revenue, has not met, our next meeting is December 3rd. Building, Grounds, and Transportation, Board Member D. St. Croix.
So Buildings, Grounds, and Transportation met yesterday. We talked about the new sign that's going to be coming outside of the high school, and then we talked about some security updates that are happening and some that have already happened, but more to come. I don't, we didn't meet very long, we didn't have a lot to meet about, but our next meeting was scheduled for December, and that has been canceled as of right now, and we will continue in January.
Okay, thank you. Ed Programs and Community Outreach, Board Member O'Brien-Hart.
Yeah, we met today with our Ed Programs and Outreach, ugh, it's been a long day talking to middle schoolers, okay.
That sounds right, Ed Programs and Outreach is good.
It's fantastic, skibidi-rizzler, okay. So, we've been focusing on the relationship between food security, attendance, and community engagement, and sort of the way all of those things influence each other, and especially today, we focus on food security aspect of that. During COVID, there were free meals for all due to grants that happened, and so since then, you know, the need for support for many families in Summersworth has been apparent, and before COVID, too. We learned that, on average, the district spends about $30,000 per year to pay negative balances at the end of the year that are left from people not paying on those food, you know, just families that can't pay. So, part of what we've been doing is just looking at what are the options that we have, what organizations can support, what are we doing internally? We were very lucky to have Fresh Picks, 68 Hours of Hunger, and Katie there tonight to give us some insight on the financials as well as different things that those programs are doing. Fresh Picks, for example, has the fresh fruit and vegetable program, 68 Hours of Hunger leaves about 150 bags a week for our schools, they've also included the Stratford Learning Center, and they have also given snacks to the nurses and stuff to give out, and that's just funded through donations, which we learned, too, which is amazing. Some of the things we want to focus on are getting those SNAP forms filled out, the more people that fill them out, the more people may qualify for assistance, also connecting to the community, getting those messages out, increasing our communication with people, and also figuring out where we can advocate at the state level to ask for more support from the people who are responsible for sending aid and adequacy funding down the pipeline. Part of the things we're looking at, what are our financial options, what scenarios would allow us to increase our offerings for students and supporting families, what are our rules for revenue streams, like what can we do fundraisers and have that revenue come to schools to help pay off those balances? Also, just brainstorming ideas, so, you know, the school staff and administrators are working so very hard to help communicate with kids and to help remedy those balances and to help make sure kids are fed, and nobody's going hungry, but we're looking at reducing the budgetary impact on schools, on the students in the school. So, the other thing is, Board Member Jameson is looking to do outreach around special education and has announced an ad hoc committee to communicate about things that are happening in special education, especially with incoming state changes in special education law. especially with incoming state changes in special education law and aid. And then Board Member Soldati continues to work on the Alton Card, ugh, oh. Arts and Culture Ad Hoc Committee and looking for ways to share out about outstanding performing arts programs in Summersworth as well as our other amazing staff members. And so the more involvement there, I know would be appreciated by Board Member Soldati, so.
That's great, it's kind of like branches out from Ed Programs to have the Special Education Ad Hoc and the Arts and Culture Ad Hoc. So, yes, go ahead.
And I was just going to say that I don't have a meeting date finalized yet, but I'll, we'll have it before December 10th meeting, so I should have some information.
Thank you both for that. These, these smaller committees that are maybe, you know, not this glamorous type is really where the work is done and where efforts are critical to be able to move it forward and then come to the board and kind of make some change. So I appreciate that, thank you. Personnel and Negotiations Committee, Board Member Clark.
I think I actually requested the office, anyway, just kidding, kidding. So we have not met, but we're meeting tomorrow to custodians agreements. And then hopefully it'll be smooth and non-adventurous, I don't know.
Yeah, that'd be great, that'd be great. Eyes on 30, City Committee and Arts and Culture.
We have not met either of the committees since our last board meeting.
Okay. And finally, Board Member Brown for Policy.
Thank you, our policy committee met on, last week, Tuesday on the 12th. And we have a number of, if people are looking at the agenda, we have a number of policies that are for first reading. And I will remind folks that the policies that begin with the letter, or the, yeah, the letter B are for school board governance. And although there are no changes to BCA, which is the School Board Member Ethics, it's always good to have a review of them because we're supposed to go through all of our policies and just have a, a review. And if we want to change them, we change. If there are no changes, at least we note in the record that the school board took a look at the policy. It hasn't, you know, sat collecting dust. You also see in the packet a policy, BCB, which is the Board Member Conflict, Conflict of Interest. And there's no change to that. But I kind of look at our board as kind of like, you know, the nonprofits. The statutes require nonprofits to look at their ethics and sign their form every year. So I think if they're doing it, our, you know, public body should at least take a look at its ethics policy once a year and just make sure, you know, remind us all. The next policy for first reading will be BEC, which is going over the non-public sessions. And we do have revisions on that one, and that is to basically cut and paste RSA 91A3 into the policy. So we're not, every time we have, have to go into non-public, we're looking up the, looking up the statute. We'll have it right there in front of us in the policy. We also have BECR, which is the NonPublic Session Minutes. It's a form that helps us when we go into non-public that we check all our, you know, cross our Ts, dot our Is on our process. You know, we're laypeople up here, not all of us are, you know, familiar with 91A, but that form will help us keep track and adhere to the requirements of 91A. And then we also discussed a policy prohibiting the use and possession of tobacco. There are some revisions in the packet. We also have a first reading revisions to EFAA, which is the Student Food Services Meal Payment and Charging Policy. And then we have another for first reading, which is Accommodation for Pregnancy, which is IHBCA. And we have a second reading that we didn't cover in our, our meeting, but when we get to the policies, the second reading is the Food and Nutrition Services Policy, ACF. But our next meeting, I think, is December 17th. And we're slowly chipping, well, I think we're going, doing well with the number of policies that we're cranking through. You know, yes, there were ones that required revisions, but we threw in the ones that don't require revisions just so we can keep the volume up and keep, you know, catching up with our review process, so. Thanks, everybody who's on this journey with me.
Thank you, wonderful, thank you, that's, it's, it's a lot. Any students want to come and do some revisions, you're welcome. It's riveting, it's actually, it has to do with you, so if you ever want to come and look at what we're doing. We have a presentation next. Agenda item 6.2, would you like to introduce?
Sure. We've got the 6.2 Summersworth High School presentation, included with the 6.3 introduction of all four of our elected Summersworth High School School Board reps. I believe our principal, Mr. Chris Tebow, is starting us off, is that correct, Chris? Thank you all for being here, connected with the presentation.
That was quick, awesome. All right, good, good. Well, thank you so much for, for having us. I'm Chris Tebow, I'm the principal at Summersworth High School. And I am joined today by a lot of different groups, a lot of different people, some students, some staff. We're, we're really excited to share the journey that we've been on this year, at least some parts of it. There's a lot going on at Summersworth High School right now, from new protocols and procedures to our full NIASC accreditation process. Some of that I'm going to share tonight, or will share tonight. A lot of it, though, we, we just won't be able to get into, so I do encourage you to take a look at your packet. There are additional slides in the packet that we just won't be able to cover tonight and kind of stay tuned for other updates. So a lot of it's exciting, we're, we're going to jump right in. Like I said, there are a few different topics tonight. We're going to hear first from our student leadership team, which is run by Mr. Bluen. Then our universal team, our Tier One PBIS team. We'll introduce our school board reps. And then to cap it off, I want to share a little more about that front-of-building grade update that we're all really excited for. So I'm going to welcome up Mr. Bluen, and he's going to introduce the student leadership team.
All right, thank you. So I wanted to first speak about our student leadership team. I am privileged to work with this group, it's a group of 10 to 12, 9th through 12th graders. They have great energy, they're altruistic, they're looking at how can they help support their fellow students. So I just wanted to say they do great work, they are amazing. So I want to first introduce Bailey Senyando, she's our senior representative, and she is going to introduce us a little bit more.
Hello, so I'm going to be talking about like who we are, our goals, and like what we're working on to accomplish our goals. So like Mr. Bluen said, we're a group of students who come from like different backgrounds, whether that is through like academic or extracurriculars. We are from like 9th through 10th grade, 12th grade. And we basically want to create opportunities for others. Our goal is to create authentic opportunities for our, our peers to learn more about their career interests. So like how we're doing this is on November 12th and November 18th, we conducted a survey using Zello's like Career Interests. Our next meeting, we're going to go over that data that we got from the survey. And basically what that data is going to tell us, it's going to break down, basically, for example, it, it's going to say like 63% of the students are interested in more like artistic careers. So we're going to take that and we're going to use that to basically promote those type of careers to our students. So we're going to use that and basically not only show like resources inside of Summersworth that they can use to help develop those career interests, but also maybe outside too. Yes, that is everything.
I want to introduce Olivia O'Brien, one of our sophomore representatives, and she's going to talk about our Topper Privilege Pass.
Okay. So basically the Topper Privilege Pass is an opportunity to recognize students who are always meeting expectations. And we earn this by showing up to class on time, showing up to school and getting a B or above in a class. And since I've got the Topper Pass, I felt like it's really good because I can schedule myself or flex anywhere I want. I get to feel really appreciated and I feel like I matter and it's really cool. And, and then the next thing is I get to like take breaks sometimes, I don't always have to ask to like leave class if I have, like I can just take my Topper Pass to the bathroom or like do whatever I would like and it's really cool, it's awesome.
Thank you, thank you. So I'm going to introduce our Summersworth High School Universal Team, or at least three members from it. Sarah Murray, Josh Tabor and Eric Engelfinger, they're going to go through some of the work we've done this year, and we're going to start with Eric.
Okay, so the universal team is one of the teams that's underneath the Positive Behavior and Intervention and Support System that we do at Summersworth High School. We look at the data that, that we get from our SWISS system, which is our behavioral tracking system, for areas in which we can improve overall student behavior, so the, the majority of students. When we identify areas that we feel are in need of improvement, and an example of that this year would be in particular phones, we work on rolling out programs to staff and students that help us to address these issues. And I think that's it.
Like, like Eric mentioned, there are two things that we're really focused on this year, really the culmination of at least two, maybe more than two years of work. One, cell phones, two, attendance. We identified these early on and for a long time as the two biggest things that were impacting students' ability to access their education consistently. One, we want cell phones to be away, they shouldn't be in class. And two, students need to come to school, that's foundational to everything, we can't support them, we can't help them, we can't take care of them if they're not here. So you're going to hear a little more about both those things, starting with cell phones.
Good evening, I'm Josh Tabor. Yeah, cell phones are a big talking point for us as a universal team. Actually, as, as Chris said, cell phones and attendance, and we were trying to prioritize which one first. And we had so many discussions and they were both so important, we said we have to do both at the same time. So the data, we talked about data, not just, not just locally, the anecdotal data is coming from teachers, but we were looking at data across the nation and actually internationally, what other countries were doing. And what we saw was that countries and others, in schools in other states were banning phones, just outright. So that was the extreme, they were just banning phones, not allowing them in their buildings, and other schools were doing a variety of other things. And so we were trying to look at the impact and try and decide what we wanted to do. But we know, as a teacher, yeah, I'm demanding, I'm, I'm asking for their attention, I'm, I'm asking them to work the whole time, but you try to compete with a cellphone. I'm sorry, there's very few people that are going to compete with a cellphone. So we had to do something, that's what we did. We made that change where they need to be in the pocket when they walk into class. And I can tell you that our experience has been fantastic. We've actually heard from students to say, you know, actually, I'm glad I put it in the, in the pocket, I don't, I don't feel it, you know, vibrate, it doesn't bother me, right? I can actually focus, so you're hearing that. And overall impact, we have a couple of slides regarding data, this is from staff. And you can see here, the blue is strongly agree, in other words, the use of student cell phones is largely eliminated. Red is agree, and you, you look at that, the, the yellow is unsure, there's actually no disagree or strongly disagree that would be. The ensures, we're pretty sure that those are probably staff members who don't actually have class, right? Going on there, we have multiple staff members who work with students who are not running as a class. So it's 90%, just about, right? And with the unsure being maybe not, so it's close to 100%. And then we look at students are more focused and engaged in academic work as a result of our cell phone policy. And again, we're at that 90% and maybe the same percentage that's, are, are not teaching a full class. So we're really proud of the work and honestly, we talk every staff meeting, every universal team meeting, every time we can, about consistency. We have to be vigilant as a staff because it is working and we won't see the fruits of our labor probably for a little while, so, but thank you. Yes? Sure, so, so we have a, like a calculator pocket chart, if you've ever, if you kind of can picture a calculator pocket chart hanging on the wall. Students walk in and they put their cellphone in that pocket. Now, some staff members have an outlet, like they have a, a six-way search protector there. So students like, they put it in the pocket and then they plug it in, so it charges during class, it works for them, works for us. So they do, they put it in that chart and then they, they sit down and, and we are able to get going. So thank you for that clarifying question. Thank you.
So I'm going to, I'm going to next start talking about our attendance policy and what were we trying to do with this policy? So as a team and as a school, we looked at what do we want for students? How do we help them get to the end goal for them and for us? And so we wanted to fully engage them in their academics, fully engage them in our school community, build stronger connections amongst the community, parents, students and staff. Allow them more opportunities to access supports and services and the great things that we offer, including the school-based health clinic. And we really just wanted to help students achieve. How could we help them? So how could we do them, get them into school?
All right, so just to review our attendance policy. So students can have up to five unexcused absences in a class without any penalty. So that is per class, so if a student misses Block One, they only get that absence in Block One, not for the, all of their classes that they attended through that day. Once a student reaches six absences, unexcused absences in a class, their overall grade for the course is overridden to an Admin D, Administrative D, which is a 60%. Now, we do have an appeals process for students at the end of the quarter, so students can appeal. And if that is granted, their original grade is restored.
So we like to look at data at the high school, so here's a couple of data points that we found, all right? We've seen with this attendance policy from September to October, comparing back to last year in 2023, we've seen a 35% decrease in missed classes. Numbers-wise, that's 2,853 classes that were not missed amongst our students in these two months in Quarter One. I, I think that's amazing. We've seen a 50% reduction in referrals for students skipping classes, so students are engaged in their learning, they want to stay in their classes for longer periods of time. And we've seen an 8% decrease in course failures amongst Quarter One. So we've seen, we've seen a change, we've seen students, anecdotally, they want to be in school, right?
Okay, so we're going to transition to calling up our school board reps. I'd like to welcome Grade Nine Nina Sousa, Grade 10 Natalia Faustino, Grade 11 Talia Pucker, and you can come right down. And then Grade 12 Thomas Reese. So they are actually going to tell you in one slide what they were working, what they're working on and what they do. I forget who we're starting, is it you?
Mine is for attending regular meetings. We attend school board meetings and we update student council and class council with new information. I wanted this role because I feel that students' ideas and comments should be heard.
As we represent the student body, we listen and try to gather the interests and needs of our community for a better understanding and consideration of the students. I decided to go for this role because it was important to me to find out why our school is structured the way it is and what helps our community to be heard.
I was in charge of bringing forward problems and solutions. We use our platform within the, within our school to discuss issues that are struggling, our community is struggling with and how we can solve them effectively. I wanted this role because I believe that everyone's voice and opinion is heard and respected within everyone, no matter the age.
I present on district happenings and we digest and compile student events and feedback and we present it back to the school board. And I wanted to be in this role because I know students have feedback and comments for the school and I think it's necessary they be heard.
Thank you, thank you, students. So the very last part of our presentation tonight, it's just a quick note on our marquee sign. This has been in the works for a while now and it, ours will not say Acton, Boxborough Regional School District. It will say Summersworth High School at the top in Georgia font with a digital component. We can put anything we want on it, it'll be full color, it'll be one-sided. That's kind of a mock-up of the base and the, the pillars, that's kind of what it'll look like. We did make sure that the brick will match our brick, but it's, we think it's going to be nice. But I guess more importantly, the, the goal for this is community and family engagement. And it's something important, it's a way for us to put up announcements, to showcase some of the awesome things going on at our school. And we wanted it a place that was visible. We did consider a bunch of different locations, we met with a couple of you actually to look at a different, a couple of different locations. And if that X makes any sense, that is right off of Memorial Drive, right next to the front entrance there. So no matter if you're coming, whichever way you're coming from on Memorial Drive, you can see it. So we're hoping to, that it's updated constantly, that it showcases the things going on at the high school or even the district and that it's, it's a good way to draw attention to the things we're doing. Just some dimensions there, it's going to be 10 feet long by, no, yep, 10 feet long by eight feet high by, by three feet wide. And we should take delivery tentatively in, in just a couple of weeks, first or second week of December, so we'll see, we're excited. That's all we have for our formal presentation. I do just want to take a, a quick minute to thank all of our students that came out, it was fast and, but they all had a really important role and we met several times before this, so we can give them a round of applause. It takes a lot and we're, we're so appreciative to all the things they, they give back to us. And yeah, we'll take any questions or if you have any questions. or if you have any questions for any of them.
I have a question, yeah. So my first question was about the pockets, but yeah, yes. But no, that's clarified, so we have that. But then I had 80% decrease in failure. Can you explain that to me? I didn't understand the 8% decrease in failure.
Yeah, good question. So just to clarify that, so we ran the data between freshmen and juniors, between those last two grades. And we saw an 8% decrease in the amount of Fs. So we just saw a lower number of failed classes amongst that cohort of individuals.
And about the new signage, there's no great place for that. I know we talked about different spots, and that was, you know, not, I don't love the position, but I know there's no great. Right, we looked at a lot of different spots.
There were a couple of factors. So one of them was the electricity. Like, so you got to run electricity to it, and so can we do that in a way that's cost-effective and close? The other was which side you pull into, so we get traffic from both sides. And so we wanted it to be visible, no matter where you were coming from. There were a couple places we looked at. We did have a team of people. We brought a whiteboard out there just to see what it would look like. And that's kind of what we landed on.
Oh, let's go Brown and then Jameson.
You guys gave us a lot of slides in addition to what you put up. And you included a couple referrals by time of day, drill down. What data was I supposed to glean from these two, the drill downs?
Thank you for bringing it up, that's a good question. So that's all like technology violations? I think you're looking at technology violations if that's under the cellphone section.
Yes, yes it is.
When we run, those are SWISS reports we're looking at. And so that's a really powerful way for us to take a look at data. We can run it a hundred different ways. And those are just some that we look at. So I think you'll see like spikes, like one spike at the end of the day. And so an important point of note is we're seeing more cellphone referrals towards the end of classes, towards the end of day. We actually talked about that at a staff meeting today and did a rollout based on that data, bell-to-bell learning. Like, we know when kids are engaged in a meaningful task, they're less likely to be distracted by other things. And so we look at that data, and then we use that to apply interventions.
Okay. I have another question, it's a different topic, because being on policy, when I hear there's an attendance policy appeal process, I was like, well, what's the criteria? That was my next question of when a kid comes in and they can't produce any kind of documentation as to why they now are in six unexcused absences. What kind of arguments are they, you know, are you looking for them to make to overcome and succeed on an appeal?
Yeah, so we just finished up all our appeal hearings for Quarter 1. We tried to get those issued pretty quickly. We met with roughly 20 students. Their appeals, most of, if not all of them, were granted back. We're looking just for them to problem-solve ways that how we can get them to come to school. It's not looking for a gotcha or, you know, trying to point out faults in their, it's really like, how could we help you get to school? And what are some obstacles? How could we give you interventions if need be?
This just reaffirms how much I love our teachers and admin staff in our schools because you get them to advocate for themselves, which is an important, you know, element that they should graduate high school with. And you're being reformative in, you know, the strategies on how can we not repeat this? And so I, so like, I'm not going to try to put a policy to that. But I like how organic you are allowing the kids to be in their arguments and supportive. So thank you very much for that explanation.
Yeah, of course.
I don't have any questions. I just want to commend you for the reasonableness of your policies. And I suspect that's why, and I think that that's what you were targeting, but you have, it seems like you have really good student buy-in, which, you know, which is what matters because you can, you know, set any rules you want, right? But I think you're focusing too on issues that were an issue, you know, 20 years ago when I was in high school even. And there are two that I think kids are, feel strongly about, right? Having to be in class and also cell phones. And the fact that you've managed to do that and have meaningful data for it is amazing. And also just listening to you, like, share about the problem-solving process, that's awesome. So, nice work.
This is a former high school guy myself, a very important question. The board should know that there was about a dozen faculty and staff members that trained for and ran a half marathon in the third week of October. Mr. Tebow was among those, our high school principal. Mr. Lampron, Mr. Lampron, our middle school principal, was among the group as well. Mr. Tebow, can you clarify whether you or Mr. Lampron ran faster in the half marathon?
He's not here, right?
That's okay.
I don't think I could speak negatively about him while he's not here. I don't think that would be, but I didn't win. So we did have, we did have one staff member, Katie Summers, who ran, she was the fastest time out of all the staff. But it was really great, we had a team of teachers over the summer, and Mr. Lampron and myself, we did training, we went to York. And it was just cool to do it together. We had shirts, Hilltopper shirts.
Chris is a better person than me. I'd just like to state for the record that he beat the middle school principal.
Geez, on the same night that we're announcing the track, we may need to put in a policy that on the third week, whoever races gets it. Any other questions from the board? The Topper Privilege Pass, 100, 150 students, how many approximately?
120. So we thought when we started this, we thought we were going to get like 50. And so we were looking at the numbers come in. Is it like really this many kids who are eligible for this? And yes, that many kids are doing all of those things above and beyond. And so we were like, do we change the standard? Do we move it up? And I think someone, Mike, it might have been Caitlin, were just like, no, this is what we, you know, this is great. This is what we are set out to do. So we were so proud of the kids, we had a whole assembly. And we're looking forward to expand it again for next semester.
It's going to almost half. I don't know, it looks like, I don't know. How many math teachers do we have in the building? Is that about 42%? I mean, we could go, that, to me, the Topper Privilege Pass absenteeism, wanting to show up, wanting to come to school, wanting to be there, building a community for that. I think building the community with the cellphone. I think we had a school board rep that said, yes, it was hard to do, but we do it. I don't know if any other schools are doing it. We didn't change the policy. Nothing changed on, we're, it was being enforced now. And I think with the rising freshmen from middle school there, you know, that helped as well. But what happens when 200 students have the Topper Privilege Pass? Is that, is that, are you designed to support such freedom?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's awesome. I think we're still like in a pilot year with it, and we'll see what happens next year. But we certainly want as many kids as possible to shoot for this. And that's what we're hearing, like, kids want to get this. They have it on a lantern in their backpacks. I know, I think we actually gave it to you, Carrie, to give to your daughter on the day you came in. It's just, it's been such a nice thing. And Maggie, you hit it on the head. It's two sides of the same coin, right? It's holding them accountable through clear expectations and consistent enforcement. And then also rewarding the students who do everything right. And I think if we can do both of those things well, that's how you really change a culture. That's how you make a building better.
That's great. Thank you so much. Any other questions from the board? We can release you into the night. Thank you so much. Yeah, thank you. All right, just moving along a little bit. 6.4 is stricken, and then the policy adoption. A lot of information of policy, we, you know, when we make changes, alterations, even if they aren't like too, they're in red. But there's a lot for this evening. So the first things first, do I have a motion to read these first-read policies by title only, please?
I motion to read these first-read titles? Wait, it's policy only? Wait, no. Policy titles?
Policies by title only.
That's hard. You know, you know.
Second. Perfect. All right, Board Member Brown, please, thank you.
Okay, the first policy for first reading in your packet appearing at electronic page 67 is A D C slash G B E D slash J I C G. Title: Prohibitions Regarding Use and Possession of Tobacco Products, E-Cigarettes, and E-Liquids in and on school facilities and grounds and during school activities held off school grounds.
Yeah, we can just go, we can go through all, yeah, let's keep going.
The next policy for first reading is B C A. Here's at page 71 of your packet, School Board Member Ethics. There is no change proposed for B C A. This is just for our review only.
Yep.
The next policy is B C B. Board Member Conflict of Interest. First reading, no edits, just trying to get this before us. The next policy is B E C. This is the Non-Public Sessions policy. And can I just describe that as I said in our report? That the non-public session edits, they look extensive, but all it really was was cutting and pasting 91A3 into the policy so we don't have to keep looking up the RSA every time we go into non-public. It's right there in the policy. It'll require us as, the legislature changes RSA 91A3 to amend this, however, it's just nice to have it in front of us.
It removed F. So.
Then the next policy is B E C dash R, which is the Non-Public Session Meeting Minutes Form. No changes. The next policy appearing at page 82 of your packet is E F A A. It is, again, first reading, Student Food Service Meal Payment Charging and Meal Account Management.
And real quick on that, just for in essence, you know, policy chair, the time of that we were requiring Administration Superintendent to call after a $20 negative balance, things like that was stricken. That was kind of what we kind of reviewed. The intent of like how it happens is just that requirement that was currently in there was just all too time-consuming and not in alignment with what the board would think. So when you see that in there, that's the main change.
Thank you for explaining the gist of it.
Yeah, the gist.
And it applied, because the policy had criteria for elementary school, high school, we just wanted one policy. We didn't want a different policy for each. The next policy to be read by title only is, here's at page 89 of your handouts. It is I H B C A. And this one is, again, for first reading, Accommodation of Pregnancy and Related Medical Conditions, colon, Students.
Great, thank you.
And I think that's it.
That's it.
It for first reading.
And student school board reps, to review these, the ethics, you are a school board member, just as we are. You just don't have the voting, even though we want to hear your voice. And when we do vote on things, we'll take that into consideration. But all of the B policies do apply to you as well. You are, except for the non-public sessions. So, you know, take a look, and if you have any questions, please ask me or any board member. When you look at these massive packets of like 100 pages, skim through it. If something catches your eye or catches something that's like you're talking about in school, please let us know. All right, Agenda Item 7.2, we have one policy for adoption this evening. It's the second reading. And do I have a motion to read this by title only?
I make a motion to read it by title.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye, okay. Yep, Board Member Brown, A C F.
Policy A C F, Food and Nutrition Services, colon, Anti-Discrimination and Civil Rights Complaints.
Okay, what's the wish of, what's the wish of the board to accept this policy as presented?
I would like to accept the policy as presented.
Great, second? Second, all right. Any discussion about anything on this policy? Pretty straightforward, legal? All right, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all right. A C F is adopted. Agenda Item Number 8 is, 8.1 is the draft of the 2025-26 school year calendar, the earliest that we have received so far. Wonderful, let's go.
This is introductory, and I would imagine, if it makes sense, it'll be up to the board possibly, vote to approve it in December, or maybe January at the latest. But welcome feedback, and just an opportunity to think about it and consider it. Just as, by way of background, we met with the superintendent, I met with the superintendents in Dover and Rochester and surrounding districts because of the Tri-City CTC agreement that we have. We seek to minimize the number of days we're out of line for kids that are commuting between CTC programs. That's both us receiving kids from Rochester and Dover and other places here, and our students that go to Dover and Rochester, for example. And we're required not to be off by more than 10 days, but we seek to keep it tight. So we work together where teacher workshop days are. We don't seek to replicate each other's calendars, that's important. The requirement from the New Hampshire Department of Education is hours, not days. You can, there is a days option, but we meet the hours requirement, hours of instructional time over the course of the year. We actually meet it, we have 177 school days slated for the 25-26 school year. We can have up to three cancellations and still meet the hour requirement without adding extra snow days. But we'll redo the math as that gets closer just to make sure we're in line with the instructional hours requirement. The collective bargaining agreement that the teachers and the parent educators have is 185 contractual days. One of those is recognized for parent educators as going to six faculty meetings, and one of those is recognized for teachers as the two-parent-teacher commitments. So that effectively leaves us with seven teacher workshop teacher workshop days and 177 school days. We could finagle that a little bit if we wished to. Oyster River, for example, has 11 teacher workshop days, I believe, slated for next school year. I think 7 is about as low as we want to go. And assuming we have at least one cancellation, we're going to tack on what would be an eighth teacher workshop day an eighth teacher workshop day that would still fit in the collective bargaining agreement. The one page that you have in front of you, there's nothing significant, uh, in terms of shift. The February break is still where the February break has typically been. The spring break is still where the spring break has typically been. Um, the first day of school would be Tuesday, September 2nd, the day after Labor Day. This wasn't a strategic decision, as some school districts often contemplate about starting before or after Labor Day. This is simply because Labor Day falls on Monday, September 1st. Um, so it's as early as Labor Day can be. Um, we've got, uh, we've spread this to administrators at all of our buildings and to the, um, teachers' union and to SACAA, that representing the paraeducators, to get feedback from a host of different places. Um, we are going to have three full teacher workshop days before the school year starts. Uh, scheduling those is yet to be determined. Um, there's sentiments about giving up one more day of summer and having a four-day weekend before the school year starts, or making those days Wednesday, Thursdays, and Fridays. But that'll be three full days, which I think everybody is excited about. Um, and then the teacher workshop days will fall typically where they've fallen, um, throughout the school year. And if we have at least one school cancellation, that'll allow us to have a teacher workshop day the day after the last day of school, which we've had pretty broad support for. So it makes the last day with students really a student day, and then an opportunity, um, for teachers and staff to come together, celebrate a little bit together, but also to do wrap-up and all kinds of things, and, and possibly even a little bit of professional development, um, on that last day, which I think is important. If we don't have any school cancellations whatsoever, then we would not have it within the contractual agreement to have a last teacher workshop day.
Right. Um, just to, just to pause on that, let's, you know, just from a kind of a, show the board for that, because I think we did that last year, and I think it just made sense, um, with using a snow day or inclement weather day after the last day for everything to, is there, is there support of that? Not for a vote, but kind of like how that makes sense in the calendar? Yeah, it looks good to be able to have a day after to use that and not to extend the day. So it would be the last day of school for students and teachers to be able to get everything done in the three minutes after students leave.
So I just need a little clarity. Uh, so I'm looking at the paper here. It says the last day of school is June 16th, which is a Tuesday. So they would have Monday off for Juneteenth?
Oh, Juneteenth's that Friday.
Okay. So is it, I thought it was, I thought Juneteenth was the 15th.
19th.
Oh, the 19th. Thank you for that clarity. Thank you.
Yeah, coming back after a three-day weekend for the last day of school would be pretty painful for everybody.
Yeah. So Monday, Tuesday, or if it was Monday, Tuesday, and then we had to tack on two days, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and then the teachers would have their workshop, get everything together on Thursday.
Yeah, everything could be pushed back a little bit. We wouldn't go to a scenario where snow days push the last day of school back for kids to June 18th, and then have teachers come back, uh, after a three-day weekend. We would let the teacher workshop day go. That wouldn't make sense.
Okay. All right. But that makes sense for their calendar. Okay.
And the only other thing I think that, uh, is worth mentioning at this point, we'll still put in five gray snow days. Um, but I'd also wanted to share that given where Christmas falls, um, which is Monday, Tuesday, which is on, uh, Thursday of that first week, we would, uh, we're proposing that we come back for school on Monday and Tuesday, December 22nd and December 23rd. The collective superintendence meeting was such that, uh, elementary families and particularly often appreciate that they've got some days at home, um, before the holidays, before their kids are released. Um, and two days isn't too bad. We wouldn't come back for one day, but coming back for two days. And then the week after, we have, um, New Year's Day, which is a holiday, and typically the end falling on a Thursday. We don't come back on Friday. Um, so we'd have a full week, the second week, and the better part of the week, Christmas week, seems where we've left off. There was some input about, um, a half day potentially on December 23rd. Uh, we'd, we'd consider that.
We haven't done half-days typically, but if it could work, it can work.
I, I lean towards full days, but we'll, we've kind of had that conversation together, and we'll, uh, we, we haven't resolved that one yet. I want to make sure folks are feeling good about it. Um, and the very last thing is, I just, we're going to do, uh, two calendars that are consistent this year. One for families that just simply focuses on school days. Um, so it's not the confusion of teacher workshop days and so forth mixed in. And the staff calendar will be much clearer because we do have days that are a little fuzzy, that paraeducators aren't working, teachers aren't working, but custodial staff are. What's the responsibility of administrators? Is this a holiday, holiday, or is it a student holiday? So just so we've got greater clarity, um, for everybody that works in the district over what each day entails. Um, and that'll be a public document, but it'll be for, um, internal and a clearer, easier document for staff. If anybody has questions at this point or feedback, but we'll, uh, bring it back in December, maybe with a tweak or two, but along these lines.
I have a lot to say tonight, sorry. Um, no, I was just going to say, it seems really good. Um, I do appreciate counting the hours instead of tacking on days in June. Having been in the classroom, and I mean this respectfully, not a lot happens on June 17th, so.
Okay, yeah. Right, we'll see you in December in kind of like, uh, calendar, typical calendar format.
We'll do it in-
Okay, perfect. All right, anything else from the board? Nothing? Future meeting dates, uh, budgets on the December 3rd, policy December 17th. Uh, it did say if needed, it's looking like we'll have a, probably a shorter meeting then. Um, Ed Programs is meeting, um, right before, are meeting on December 10th, and, uh, and then January 14th. Any comments by visitors this evening? No? Thanks for staying. Hi. I'm sure you don't want to say anything. You can say anything you want. No, okay. Um, anything. Uh, there's, there's, there's free speech in these chambers. Um, uh, Agenda Item number 12, comments by board members. Yeah, uh, I just looked up, so Clark Jameson Brown.
I just want to take a minute and, um, thank you to the students' reps that came up and spoke today. I know it's not easy to speak. I was very impressed with all of you. Great job. Great job. Um, that is it. Thanks.
Um, I just want to make sure that I call the broad public's attention, um, to the articles about, um, state special education funding, um, being reduced from 90, roughly 98% in 2023 to, um, potentially 67% next year. Um, so I'm not going to get into hard numbers this year. Thank you, this year. Um, so I'm not going to get into hard numbers right now, but this is, I mean, there's no way this doesn't impact all of our school districts. And so I think that people need to be aware of that, um, and understand too that, and I'll say this, I think for every school board meeting, that special education, um, is driven by federal and state laws that we do not have control over. And so we follow the laws and people don't necessarily fund us to do that. Um, and so if you feel fired up about that, I would love for people to speak out to the state or, or federally, if you have a voice there, um, because we're doing our part to follow the laws with the budgets that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, Board Member Brown.
Now, that was similarly, uh, as Jameson, um, mentioned, Jameson, sounds like a first, sorry. Board Member Jameson, that I, when I read that the Department of Ed Commissioner, you know, was warning about a down budget, that we were going to get funding cuts, it's like, that alarmed me. You know, I don't know how else to protect ourselves from the fact that we have statutes that have to be followed, whether they're at the state level or the federal level. And we're trying to meet, be, you know, make do with less. I just, I find it alarming. And if there's any time that anyone feels that they want to be political about this, uh, call, you know, state reps, et cetera, please do. Um, it's our kids. Thanks.
Yep. We have no discretion over, over special education. Yes, Board Member Saldati.
Um, in this vein, um, if anyone is interested, on December 10th, which is the day of our next board meeting, um, that morning at 9:30, the New Hampshire, the State of New Hampshire will be making their appeal, um, to the New Hampshire Supreme Court regarding the adequacy, the decision about inadequacy of funding, uh, to, it's the Conval versus State of New Hampshire case. I encourage anyone from the public to attend, uh, and watch the, that hearing in front of our, uh, Supreme Court as this, um, impacts, um, our state's constitutional obligation to fund public education adequately. Um, so again, the state is appealing the court's decision, uh, that said that they do not fund public education adequately, and it's open to the public. So we'll see there.
Yes, Board Member Brown.
If I could just add that the Supreme Court oral arguments, not only, I mean, you have an opportunity to be there in person, but you can sign, uh, you can go live and watch them virtually. Um, I don't have the citation right now in front, or the hyperlink to direct you to, but, um, the Supreme Court does have the, um, the oral arguments live. Um, so thank you for mentioning that.
Okay. Anyone else?
Um, just where we recognized the varsity team tonight, the volleyball team, what an amazing job that they did and everything. Um, I wanted to also recognize all the other sports too that we have that played. Um, the football team and what an amazing job they did in how hard they worked to get where they were at. Um, the JV volleyball team as well, as well as the cheerleaders, because they've all come so far. They all got to the, the championship areas and they worked so hard. But, um, I wanted to make sure we recognized everybody because our schools, they really did amazing job.
We should invite, let's invite them, let's invite them to December. Let's invite someone. We need to invite some students to December. Oh, yeah, Board Member Brown.
For a third time, I'm sorry, but I totally forgot during my, my space that tomorrow, if you have kids that are signed, that want to sign up for athletics, um, be at the high school at 6:00 PM. That's the parent, uh, kid sign up for athletics. Thank you.
Board Member comments, but Steve Hodgson, our Athletic Director, will be in December to speak about fall sports in general, and the kickoff of winter sports. He'll do the same thing later in the year, to speak about winter sports as spring kicks off and then spring as well. And I just want to add a matter of fact, since everybody's talking about it, if anybody may be watching at home, it's just good to know, um, that the, very important to know that the State of New Hampshire, the funding that comes from the State of New Hampshire to our public schools is actually last in the country, the percentage. So the, what we spend on our schools is above average as a whole due to what local communities, um, put into it. But New Hampshire, last I looked, was dead last. And if we're not dead last right now, we're 47th, 48th, or 49th, and I think people need to understand that.
I'll, uh, yeah, yeah. Board Member Saldati, go for it.
I'm going to hold the line.
Oh, please, please, please.
This is just another event to add to everyone's, uh, personal calendar. Um, on Thursday, this Thursday, the 21st, um, at the Mulligan's Grill in Summer, at the Summersworth High School, is the Hilltop Health Alliance, uh, meeting. It is at 6 o'clock to 7:30, open to the public. Anyone interested in the health of our community, public health, mental health, um, well-being, uh, please join us.
Yes, community building. I was, I was, thanks for, you kind of got me off of saying that, starting to say that this is our community, this is what we are charged with. When we are small enough to shift and make change that is felt, when funding does not happen for our most vulnerable and needed population in the city, we have no, we don't determine that. I know there's been some questions, why, why do we have higher, higher special ed, um, needs? But if that is, we, that is our, that is our legal obligation to have that. We need to be as focused and analytical and keep going with this. And also, I want to be very clear, Summersworth taxpayers, you will pay for this if the, the state and federal does not. It is not our decision. It is not the will of the board. It is our community and our children that have identified needs. The board has nothing really, truly, it is, it is personal, it is protected that we deal with. We support this, but if it doesn't come, then it will be in our, our tax bill in New, in Summersworth. The taxpayers will pay directly for it. And, um, we will be very intentional with how we, with how we share our data and what's going on, and as transparent as possible with, with data and figures. Thank you, Board Member Jameson, for leading that, because I think that'll be a very clear thing for folks that may not know where, where this is coming from and why we've asked for millions of dollars because of need. So that's kind of what's coming because our budget start season's starting, um, it's starting now, but in January. So, um, thank you to the high school. Thank you to the students. Um, we owe our, our duty is owed to you and to this community. Um, we work for you. We hear you. That is how it goes. This is not, um, something that, um, you know, this isn't for ourselves. This is for you all. And hopefully that's felt by the decisions in our words, um, tonight and at our meetings. With that, we do have to enter into non-public per, um, 91A32C.
Motion to enter into non-public, 912AC.
That's it? Yeah, do I have a second? Yeah. And can I have a, please have a roll call, Katie?
Maggie Larson.
Yes.
Carrie Clark.
Yes.
Sarah O'Brien-Hart.
Yes.
Crystal D. St. Croix.
Yes.
Marsha Brown.
Yes.
Barbara Wentworth.
Yes.
Bridgette Jameson.
Yes.
Gemma Saldati.